I think we're good. Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting, Monday, August 31st, 2020, Wakeport Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 60 and Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., Route 649. This is a virtual and remote meeting, broadcast live on local cable, Channel 18. Public call-in number is 508-539-1400, extension 8585. This is also streamed live on the Town Hall Mashpee website. I'd like to convene the meeting and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remind us of silence, please. Thank you. Can I have a motion for, let me see, Monday?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes from Monday, August 10th, 2020, regular session.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Do we have public comment? We actually have Mr. George Schmidt actually in the House this evening. And then I'll take if there's anybody on the phone next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was unaware that this was only call-in and that I would have to be on the agenda, actually, to be here this evening, so I appreciate you waiving the rules a bit and allowing me to be here.
Not a problem.
And to speak in person. I'm here to express my displeasure at events that happened this past weekend. I know that there's safety involved and I know certain things have to be done. But for a school committee member to find out what has happened to the schools in a newspaper before the school department was notified is totally unacceptable. For an event to happen and wait 24 hours before the school superintendent was notified that something had happened is unacceptable. I don't understand what went wrong. I don't expect it to happen again. If this were any other year, we could have had students in that field in the morning. There were no barriers set up. There was no indication that anything had happened. What's done is done. As of it stands right now, and this changes daily, but as it stands right now, September 25th is the date that the sports activities will be allowed, and that is when we need the field ready. And I'm going to ask the Selectmen's support and the Town Support to make sure that that happens and whatever happens that needs to be done happens for that. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, George. Do I have anybody else on the phone for public comment?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. If you don't mind, whoever else is on the phone waiting, can you mute your phone until you're looking to speak? I appreciate it. Thank you. All right, discussion and approval of the special event, Head of the Ponds Regatta, Hattaquin Park, Mashpee, Wakebee Pond, Sunday, September 13th, 2020. And petitioner is Alan Robinson.
Everyone seems to have approved fire, police, DPW, and Board of Health.
Mr. Chairman, there is, the gentleman is on the Zoom.
Okay. So, Alan, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am, John.
Okay, would you like to give a quick announcement of what this, the event's all about?
Sure, thank you. This is organized by a group of friends who are rowers, who are rowing on Mashpee-Wakebee ponds, which I have to tell you is just a wonderful place to row. And these are racing boats, similar to what you would see on the head of the, on the Charles River. The regatta is just for approximately 25 boats. These are boats that are rowed by one person, singles, or two people, doubles, but only if those doubles, if those two people are cohabiting, if they're husband-wife or husband, or father, father-daughter, anything to that effect. It's going to be 7.5 miles, starting at the beach at Hattaquin Park on the south, south end of Mashpee Pond. We'll be rowing through the connecting straight to Wakebee, around the three islands, and then back again to the beach. It's a long race. We've done this by invitation only, so we know all the people who are rowing. Everyone is aware of the requirement for social distancing and wearing masks or off the water. The race actually starts at 7:30 in the morning, and it'll be over by about 8:30 or so, and we'll be packed up and out of there by 9:30, 10 o'clock. We'll be taking our trash with us, and we'll make sure there's no litter. And we look to have a good time, and if this works out well for, for, for the participants, and if the town likes the idea, we hope to do this again in subsequent years and maybe build it up into a, a somewhat larger regatta. But again, only for singles and doubles. And I guess I also add that all the participants, participants will be 21 years old or older.
Okay. It sounds like a fun event, Alan. Thank you for that explanation. Anything else from Wayne? Do you have anything to add to it?
I make the motion to approve the special event, Head of the Ponds Regatta.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. David?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Myself with a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. All in favor? Alan, you're all set? Approved. Have fun.
Thank you, good luck.
Have a great event.
Very welcome.
Anybody who'd like to come down to see it, please join us on the 13th at, at 7:30 in the morning.
My dog will, my dog will bark at you all as she go by, as she always does every, every weekend morning.
Thank you.
All right. Good luck.
Bye-bye. Thanks.
Okay, we have a public notice for tree removal due to Route 151 Corridor Improvement Project, Department of Public Works Director Catherine Lorenz. Catherine, you on the phone?
I am.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting me on tonight. This is, again, having to do with our Route 151 Corridor Improvement Project. We have triggered certain thresholds with MIPA and therefore have been required to file an environmental notification form. As part of that filing, because the project will involve the removal of five or more public shade trees, which are defined as trees that are 14 or more inches in diameter, we are required to have a public meeting with, with yourself just for approval for those remove, the removal of those trees. So, in the memo to you, I did break it down between Phase 1, which is the phase from the Mashpee Rotary to approximately the Old Barnstable Road intersection, and then Phase 2, which is from the Old Barnstable Road intersection to the town line. Phase 1 will involve the removal of 47 so-called shade trees. Phase 2 would be 38 shade trees.
Catherine, while you're on the phone, for Phase 1, when will that start?
So, Phase 1 is the one that will be moving forward, starting in federal fiscal year 21. The timeframe that they've given us is that it would actually go out to bid next spring, so spring of 21. And once they get through the, the bid and contract award process, because we do have the time of year restriction about not working during the summer months, we anticipate that the actual construction wouldn't start until fall of 21.
Fall of 21. And, and when does Phase 2 start?
So, Phase 2 has not been scheduled at this point.
Okay.
With the decision to put, to split the project into two phases.
Exactly.
The state is now requiring that we submit Phase 2 as a separate project for inclusion on the tip. So, we basically are going back into the queue for Phase 2. At this point, the tip is, is already scheduled through five years. So, Phase 2 would probably be, you know, five plus years.
Okay. Thank you.
Catherine, one other question. So, would, would you be removing the 47 from Phase 1 and 38 trees from Phase 2 at the same time, or would the 38 on Phase 2 be put off at a later date?
The Phase 2 would, would be undertaken when we went forward with Phase 2.
Okay.
So, while the, the filing, the ENF that was filed was for the entire project, what would be happening within the next year would only be Phase 1.
Okay. Thank you.
MIPA makes you look at the whole project instead of just distinct chunks, so that you're not minimizing the impacts. You have to look at the whole thing and then even if it moves in pieces.
Makes sense. Anybody else on the board have any questions?
David Whedon, I, I have one question. On page 17 of your landscape plan, I don't see the, I'm not sure if I'm in the right area. I'm unfamiliar with the station numbers, but the page 17, it doesn't clearly call out the Quashnet River. I do see the 200 and 100-foot river, the wetland buffer. But I was wondering, on that page, are the curb cuts for the two trails going to remain on either side of the road there at the Quashnet River?
Yes, at, at this point, unless the, the town wanted to, to change those curb cuts, we are proposing to retain them.
Yeah, I, I would encourage that myself.
Is there, can I follow, is it, Catherine, is there going to be stormwater control at that site so that you don't have runoff going down the, down the curb cut into the river?
Yes. So, that is part of the pipe system, which we actually have already gone to Conservation Commission for their approval.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we approve the tree cutting removal as outlined in the presentation from Catherine.
Second that motion.
Any other discussion? Not hearing any? Andy?
Yes.
Yes.
Carol? Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Catherine, you're all set, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Discussion and approval of CCC Mashpee Holdings LLC to hold a virtual community outreach meeting. And I believe in attendance is Chief Operating Officer Alan Gronfeld, and I believe someone else as well. Alan, am I correct?
Yes, yes. Alan is here, and I should have on the line my colleague Larissa, who's the chief.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, welcome. And you want to give a brief introduction?
Yeah, sure. So, as you probably are aware, we currently hold a house community agreement with the Town of Mashpee for a cultivation and product manufacturing facility at Echo Road. And we're currently in the process of obtaining our state license from the Cannabis Control Commission. And we just, in preparation for, as well, the DBA application, which we hope to submit later in September or early October, before we appear at the public hearing, we would like to hold, hold another community outreach meeting in addition to the one we had last year, just to give the public a chance to raise any questions that they might have to the project. And this would just give us a, a chance to adjust our application if necessary for, for the DBA.
Okay. Anybody from the Board of, any questions from this, or Mr. Taylor or Mr. Collins have any input on this?
No.
No? Any other discussions?
No.
I make a motion, we approve the petition to hold the public community outreach meeting as a virtual meeting.
I'll second that motion.
I have a first, I have a second, any discussion? Hearing none?
All set to go.
Go with David?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I'm a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. You're all set?
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, have a good night.
Good night.
Communications and correspondence, update, discussion as possible, action relative to COVID-19. Mr. Collins?
Currently, the number remains at 79. There will be a department head meeting this Wednesday, discuss reopening at that particular time with department heads. And I have been informed by the fire chief that the 9/11 ceremony has been postponed due to COVID-19.
Wow. Get it? Okay. That's about it? Okay. I guess we'll get right into the draft articles?
John, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Given that four or five of these articles require an action that we're going to be discussing in executive session, maybe we, what if we just held off on this so we can give them as much certainty about what's on the warrant, not on the warrant?
And do it after?
And do it after.
Do the whole thing?
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
I just think it might be cleaner for you guys, so you know what you're dealing with.
That's not a bad idea.
That's a great point.
That's a great point.
Everybody in agreement?
You agree with that?
Yeah.
Ron?
We'll just come back to it in a little bit.
Okay. All right, we'll circle back on that later. Perfect. Discussion and approval of the cable and conduit location of Nathan Ellis Highway, west of Jobs Fishing Road, petition 2387970, Paul Haring held August 24th, 2020, at 8:30 a.m. with Assistant Town Manager Wayne Taylor. Wayne, you want to just?
Yeah, we, we had put this off at the last meeting, if you recall, and that was due to the fact that Catherine hadn't had a chance to look at that conduit and making sure it didn't interfere with 151. She has looked at it, it is good, so we're good to approve.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve the conduit location on Nathan Ellis Highway.
Second.
I have a first, I have a second, any discussion? Not hearing any? Go start with David?
Yes. Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
Unanimous. All right.
New business.
New business. Discussion and certification statement of lien in the amount of $114,557.15 pursuant to Mass. General Law, Section 139, 3A, for 95, Echo Road, Mashpee, Mass., Book 27, 972, Page 35. Owner assessed is Manuel Cabral and Health Agent Glenn Harrington, representing the Health, Health Department.
So, now this is done, and now we go after?
So, I believe we need a motion to pursue a lien on the property, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Does anybody want to discuss that, or do I hear a motion?
I think we need to motion.
Discuss it, I think the motion.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying. Does anybody want to discuss it prior to?
Nope.
Do I hear a motion? To approve going forward with a lien on the property?
Yes, move forward.
So, moved.
All right. So, I have a first, I have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? David?
Yes. Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Unanimous. Surprise. Discussion relative to the Mashpee Community Gardens.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, the community gardens has been renovated and upgraded this year and is completely sold out, and from everything I see.
It actually looks beautiful.
It looks great, has been a real community asset. And I think that, you know, while a lot of people contributed to the idea and pursued it, you know, one person who recently had to step down from variety of his town assignments, Michael Talbot, was a important mover in driving that community asset. And in recognition of both that effort and, more importantly, frankly, a lengthy record of service to the betterment of the environment of, not just Mashpee, but the whole Cape, I'd like to see the Board provide a name recognition of the community garden, dedicating it to Michael Talbot and appreciation of his contributions to the town of Mashpee, and I would move that such a thing happened, and we have a mock-up of what a sign will look like.
Hope Mr. Talbot's watching. I think this is an amazing idea, and I, you know, I, I ought to thank you, Andy, for bringing it up, and I think there's no better candidate I can think of when you're talking about a garden and being green and how much it's meant to the community, so. So, I believe, do we have to, do I see a motion to?
Motion, yeah. Is that your motion?
That was my motion, but, yeah.
And I absolutely, great, great idea.
Andy, the motion, and Carol, second of the motion, and can I, any discussion?
Is, is there any signage over there now?
There is. Right now, what's there are the top two, the community garden and the community preservation piece, and the idea would be to put a small, you know, sign underneath that to acknowledge the naming.
Perfect. Great idea.
Mr. Collins?
I would just need clarification from the Board as to whether or not you want the second rocker removed and the third rocker put in its place, or whether you want the third rocker to go underneath the second.
I think it looks perfect just like that.
I, I think the, the important thing is that the naming happens. What the aesthetics are, I'll leave to your collective judgment.
Then I would put the, the third up there in replace of the second, so that it's more exposed.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. I defer to your judgment on that one. My opinion. Everybody good with that? Put it to a vote?
Yes.
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 And again, I'd just like to thank Mr. Talbot for his years of service to the town. We're a better place for his efforts.
I second that, Mr. Talbot. Thank you very much for all your service to the town.
Great job.
Absolutely.
All right. All right. Any additional topics, liaison reports?
Not since last week.
Exactly.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion on the Board. I'm sorry.
Before you go, I know we have Ashley on the line for one of those articles you wanted to bring up on the Schumet.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if you wanted to get her squared away before or not, so it's up to you, just wanted to.
You wanted to have her talk, and then we can hold our, hold discussion?
That's a good point before, otherwise she has to wait on, right on the phone. Ashley, you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you for waiting so patiently.
No problem.
What number was the article?
They want some clarification for the, I have Article 17, I don't know what you guys have, it's a new draft, but, so basically, this would be, see if the town will vote to add the sound and cause to the Mashpee General Bylaw, the use of personal watercraft, including jet ski watercraft, coast jet watercraft, and wet bike watercraft is prohibited on a Schumet pond or take any action there. So, I just wanted to explain to you a little bit about the history and why this even came about. So, there was a five-year study that was conducted in the mid-'80s, and this is a diagnostic, diagnostic and feasibility study of the Schumet pond area. It was produced by KV Associates and IEP Incorporated, and this was completed back in March of 1989 for the five years prior they were studying the pond. This was prepared for the Town of Falmouth and Mashpee. It was also submitted to Mash, Department of Environmental Quality and Engineering Division, Water Pollution Control and Clean Lake Program. So, what the, basically, what they did is that there was a feasibility study that focused on the selection of alternative actions to improve and maintain a high water quality for recreational use on the Schumet ponds. And what they found on the pond is suggestions to the town for in-lake water use and zoning. I don't know if you want me to go through the entire explanation, but basically what they're saying is, so the shoreline is pretty prohibitive to certain water bikes, jet skis in particular, and their recommendation was, within the water use and zoning, it is recommended that jet skis be prohibited from the lake use. Numerous incidents of running through, bathing to each areas occurred during the study. The jet skis create a noxious noise during the study, and it was decidedly louder than other motor boats on the pond. During their operation, there was conflict with small boats that were fishing in near-shore swimming areas, and they were trying to say that they can be consigned to different regions. But the telemetry of the pond is pretty shallow, and they were saying it affects water quality because of the sediment being stirred up. So, they suggested their recommendations to the Town of Falmouth and Mashpee in March of 1989, and the Town of Falmouth moved forward with their bylaw to prohibit jet skis in April of 1989. Mashpee did not follow, and I'm not sure what the history is behind that, but basically, we want to come into compliance with the Town of Falmouth because they are the ones and the only ones on the Schumet pond to have a ramp to access the water there. So, the Town of Falmouth does enforce it on their side. However, Mashpee does not have the same bylaw, so we see, we frequently see jet skis moving over to the other side of the pond. I have talked to the Massachusetts Environmental Police, who have an extensive call log for Schumet ponds, and they also relayed the information that most of the reports of the violations come from residents that live on the lake, and the people who are out of compliance are regularly out of compliance, and they have been cited. I've actually gone around the lake and talked to multiple residents. I could not find a positive quote from anybody. I have some quotes, if you want me to read them for you, but the people who live on the lake are unhappy with the way that they're just complete disregard for any of the regulations, the mass regulations. People have seen anything from people towing four people to having small children operating the vessel, which you have to be at least 16 years of age and older to operate a personal watercraft. So, it's just complete disregard of any of the regulations on the lake, and we want to be in compliance to this five-year study and the Town of Falmouth. So, that's why we wanted to move forward with this bylaw.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you have any further questions, I'd be happy to ask them. Answer them.
We're gonna, we can debate it when we start to look at the articles, but if anybody has any specific questions for Ashley now, so she won't be there later.
Yes. Yes, I do.
Mr. O'Hara has a question, Ashley.
So, Ashley, I can tell you that last year, when this came before us, there was nothing ever talked about a study environmental-wise. It had to do clearly with just the operational misuse of the, of the jet skis. The other part of that is that the, the pond itself, I believe, the smallest part of the pond is, is that on the Falmouth side. In other words, I think there's only a few homes there, a handful of homes, versus the rest of the, of the homes that are there on the lake, they're Mashpee residents. I see this as a taking of their right to use their land. This has a benefit, is that it, having the right to have a jet ski there, you're, they're going to decrease the value of their home, because a lot of those people, and if you remember, I don't know if you were there or not, they spoke very confidently and were very upset that they weren't notified of the lock, possible loss of use of a jet ski on a pond that they specifically moved to, to use their jet skis. They bought them because their children liked them, and it seems to me like it's more of an enforcement issue of the, the use of the, of the vehicles and, and not, not so much the environmental issue. The environmental issue, I can tell you, it was never brought up. So, why it wasn't is beyond me. It was just the misuse, the people that I talked to in Falmouth, they called me repeatedly, and they were all very upset about the misuse of the, of the, of the jet skis, the speed and the, and whatever. And, and I don't know how much enforcement has taken place, but somebody's there, sitting there and writing citations to individuals that are misusing these. Maybe you can tell me on, on one of them at a time, if you are the best you can. Thank you.
Okay, so, in answer to your study, well, I dug it up. It wasn't presented back then. That is why the Town of Falmouth passed this. It was immediately after the study was completed that, that Falmouth followed through. The study was pretty, goes into depth why they wanted it to be banned, and they went through the, you know, the along-the-shoreline regions, there's designated public swimming beaches, the areas are scattered vegetation, there's areas that are less than a certain amount of depth, which is not conducive to jet skiing. And the problem is, if Mashpee were to enforce it, once they get to the side of the ramp, if they were going to enforce jet skis, if they go over to the Town of Falmouth and they're offloading, we have no jurisdiction. We can call the Massachusetts Environmental Police, and they'll come, but again, they're not going to accept any ruling by the Town of Falmouth. they're not gonna accept any ruling by the town of Falmouth. If the town of Mashpee isn't in, in the same, you know, they have the same bylaw. Uh, I'd also talked to the Massachusetts Environmental Police in that this would most likely, if both towns come and have the same agreement, it'll go in front of their legal counsel, and in that case, they can approve or disprove of this ban. Um, it really comes down to water quality, and as far as the, you know, home value, I think it could increase the home value, to be honest. Uh, I've received numerous complaints and videos of people out there jet skiing, towing people. I've seen jet skis jump, jumping their wigs. It's very dangerous. Um, they'll go around in circles because this pond in particular, this is from the, um, the harbor master over in the town of Falmouth, for you to get up to at speeds, you have to pretty much be doing donuts in the middle of the pond. Uh, I did go around the entire pond, and I was able to count five jet skis total. Um, so those were direct abutters that owned the jet skis there. So, I mean, it really comes up to what how the town feels about it, the abutters. And the abutters have expressed concern, and they're not great quotes that I have here. They're, you know, one guy took on water just trying to fish in the pond that he lived on, and the jet ski came within 25 feet of his boat, and he was hauling out water and just ended up calling it a day. So, I think it will improve the property values, in my opinion, um, but it will be restricted to other owners of jet skis, but it's with complete disregard of any of the rules and regulations. There's an issue.
Thank you, Ashley.
Ashley, I, I would agree. If, if the rules aren't enforced, you're right, you do have a problem. Like, you know, and I guess, has there ever been an attempt to enforce the rules?
They've been called on multiple occasions and showed up, and they're at the ramp on the Falmouth side.
Right.
And we call the Falmouth harbor master who has a shoreline who cannot come, and then we call the Massachusetts Environmental Police, who are an hour and hour, and it, it, it gets to be complicated. We have a vessel available to go out on the lake, so we will be out there to enforce rules and regulations. But the problem is the jet skis, and they are affecting the people on the lake. I have, I mean, I can go through some of the quotes, and I did. I asked every single person I came into contact with, and they, not one person said, oh, yeah, they're great. Like, they, they, I mean, I, some, they have some people here who have quoted, "I've seen a dog and three children riding around on the jet ski." Um, it's just, it's complete disregard. And they, we've been out there to educate them, and there's been people who are routinely cited for the same thing.
Ashley, so with that, so you're, you are only referring, I keep hearing about jet skis, but you're referring to it's all motor boats, correct?
No.
No, not all motor boats.
This is, so this ban is exclusively, so this is exclusively for jet skis?
Personal watercraft.
Personal water-
Jet skis, wet bikes.
Wet boats.
Not, not boats. There's a class of-
No.
There's a class of vessels, personal watercraft, that this applies to.
So, personal watercraft.
Last year's was worded badly.
Okay.
And it was too expansive.
So, this includes like a two, because they have these like two-person jet skis, which I've seen.
Includes them, too.
That's included, that's, that's all part of the personal, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, again, we can discuss the merits of it, you know, in our own time, but as far as Ashley goes, does anybody else have any specific for Ashley?
Couple of questions, Ashley, David Whedon. Um, one, um, do you have any record of accidents on the boat attributed to jet skis, and how, do you have statistics on that?
Um, I just have general statistics, um, but, you know, USGS, but, um, I mean, sorry, the US Coast Guard. I have requested a full log on a Schumet pond from the Massachusetts Environmental Police, and they said it's expensive. There has been a death on the pond. I'm not sure if it was related to a personal watercraft or not at the time.
Thank you. Um, second question is, um, so the language of this article, is it consistent with Falmouth's, uh, language to enable adequate enforcement?
Yes, it is. Um, I just wanted to add that the confusion last year, I want to read to you what exactly Falmouth has and why it was not taken at the last, um, town meeting, but they have the use of jet ski watercraft, surf jet watercraft, wet bike watercraft, and other so-called personal watercraft, which are motor boats, is prohibited on a Schumet pond. And this is where the confusion came from at the last town meeting. So, I removed which are motor boats from our wording, but it means the same thing from an enforcement standpoint.
Thank you, Ashley.
Yeah.
And, uh, everybody good with Ashley? All right. Thank you, Ashley. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Have a great night.
You, too.
Mr. Chair, make a motion. The board enter into executive session.
Just tell manager just quick, as far as updates, you good?
I don't have any.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Reconvene in the executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy regarding negotiations with the following collective bargaining units. Where an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. Laborers International Union of North America, Luna Mass Public Employees, Local 1249, Administrators Unit A. Administrators. Laborers International Union of North America, Luna Mass Public Employees, Local 1249, Administrators Unit B. Administrators. Service Employees International Union SEIU, AFL-CIO, Local 888, Public Works Unit A. Service Employees International Unit SEIU, AFL-CIO, Local 888, Public Works Unit B., from which the board will reconvene and open session.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 No one else is on the phone, right? I'm hanging it up.
Or just kill it.
Yeah, just kill it. Lift it up and hang it down.
She's calling now.
She's on the wrong number.
You're all set?
Okay, we're good. Go ahead, Josh.
So, it's listed on their second page, new business.
What's that?
The contracts are listed on page two.
Of the new business.
Of the new business.
So, we'll open up the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
There you go. Kathy's, we took Kathy's on.
She should be on now.
Kathy, you on?
No.
Someone else is on?
Uh, is somebody on?
You can always watch the tape.
Kathy, you on?
We're good, anyway.
Okay. Go ahead.
Is the speaker on?
Okay. All right. So, we're back out of an executive session and jump over to the new business?
Yep.
Discussion approval, ratification of the contracts for the following collective bargaining units. Laborers International Union, North America, Luna Mass Public Employees, Local 1249, Administrators, Unit A. Administrators.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we authorize, that we ratify the vote taken in the executive session that authorized the town manager to execute contracts with the following bargaining units. Laborers International Union of North America, Luna Mass Public Employees, Local 1249, Administrators, Unit B. Service Employees International Union SEIU, AFL-CIO, Local 888, Public Works Unit A. Service Employees International Union SEIU, AFL-CIO, Local 888, Public Works Unit B.
I have a motion for all four?
Second.
I have a second. Any other questions? Discussion? David?
Yes.
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 Unanimous. Okay.
Also commend town manager and his team and Wayne for hammering out good and fair contracts.
Exactly.
Well done.
Good job.
Yep. All right. Jump over to-
The MHR.
Back to the articles for town meeting. So, we have, let me see, the group one?
We jumped to Article 5. We've done everything. We've done one through four.
Six. So, it starts six.
Six.
Six. Okay.
So, do you want us to read the total going into each one?
Okay.
Okay. To see if the town will vote and appropriate and transfer the sum of $45,746 from revenue available for appropriation.
No, hold on.
Wrong, wrong one?
Nope. They're not in order the way.
Oh, they're not in order. Okay.
Unfortunately. The 1249.
Okay, this is Luna Mass Publix, 12.
It's $26,645.
Okay, thank you. Public Employees Local Administrator A., administrative effective July 1st, 2020, with said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by the town accountant or take any other action relating thereto.
I'll second that.
For a second, any discussion? Not hearing any. David?
Yes.
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 Unanimous.
This one is-
Forty-five thousand.
Article six. To see if the town, Article seven. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $45,746 from revenue available for appropriation to fund the Laborers International Union of North America, Luna Mass Public Employees, Local 1249, Administrators Unit B. Administrators, effective July 1st, 2020, with said funds to be distributed to various salary lines, items by the town accountant, or take any other action related thereto.
I'll second that. Carol, just for clarification, is that to both include and support?
That is to, I'm sorry, to include and support.
So, that would be true for Article six and Article seven, eight and nine?
Thank you.
Okay, just.
Have our first and second. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Unanimous.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm getting this one right.
Yes, and this one is-
Thirty-nine thousand. The third one.
Okay, to, Article number eight. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $39,462 from revenue available for appropriation to fund the Service Employees International Union, SEIU, AFL-CIO, Local 888, Public Works Unit A., effective July 1st, 2020, with said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by the town accountant or take any other action related thereto. To add and support.
Second.
First, second. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Nine.
Article nine. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $22,565 from revenue available for appropriation to fund the Service Employees International Union, SEIU, AFL-CIO, Local 888, Public Works Unit A., effective July 1st, 2020, with said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by the town accountant or take any other action related thereto. To add and support.
Second.
First and second. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Nine.
Article nine. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $22,565 from revenue available for appropriation to fund the Service Employees International Union, SEIU, AFL-CIO, Local 888, Public Works Unit B., effective July 1st, 2020, with said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by town accountant or take any other action related thereto. To, to add and support.
Second.
First and second. Discussion. Not hearing any. David?
Yes.
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 That's Article nine approved. Article 10. Oh, no, do we?
All we need to do is jump to 12 now, the jet ski bylaw.
Um, on 10, the finance committee, um, at their meeting, they did have, um, concern with subsection C. on Article 10. Um, they interpret it as, uh, in the event of the declaration, uh, the town of emergency affecting the availability and/or, and/or quality of drinking water for Mashpee residents, the town shall be exempt from this bylaw for a period of seven days, seven calendar days after such declaration. So, they felt as though you were limited to a seven-day window for distribution in emergency situation.
I, hm, that's, yeah.
So, they didn't care for the, uh, seven-day limitation to distribute in, during a pandemic, which it doesn't have-
Actually, if you really read it carefully, it's not just for a pandemic. It's about quality availability of drinking water, not-
Right, there's other-
That's a really good point.
Right.
Right. The other one, they suggested not, um, not banning the distribution, only ban the sales.
Well, maybe, um, since it's a petition article, I mean, I guess we could change the language.
Can we just strike out at the last line of C. Is just from this bylaw?
I don't know that you can do that legally.
No, you can't.
Let's, um-
Because it's a petition article.
Since we don't have to execute this tonight, let's take that, maybe talk to the original petitioners and see if we could come back to the board with some better language.
Yeah.
Aren't we executing this tonight?
No, we don't have to execute until the 14th.
We do have one last.
But it's a really good point that it would come out of that.
It's just a, yeah, I mean, it's, I guess you can read it both ways. I mean, I look at it as, it's good for seven days, but if the, if you're in a situation of a-
Emergency lasts seven months.
Right. It's still going on.
Right.
So, you're, but I guess it's interpretation. Why not?
I could say a period of seven days from the end, but it doesn't say that. It says from the time you call it.
Yeah, so.
Anyway, let's talk to the-
Get some clarity.
Talk to the petitioner and see what, and maybe Pat, see what we, since we are now sponsoring it, are we bound by the petitioner's wishes, or can we just make a change?
It's a unique set of circumstances.
It is.
Because I've never seen a petition article turn into an article-
Right.
Submitted by the board like this one, so, um, I'm not sure.
We never got-
Get some guidance.
Never had COVID-19 before.
So, we'll get, we'll get some guidance, and then we'll get clarification from the petitioner to see whether or not that provision can be changed, and then I think people would be more comfortable.
They don't change, if they're not willing to change it, it might kill the whole thing.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah.
Could, right.
Why would you not change that?
Why would you not change it?
Right. Article 12.
Eleven, 12, yeah, 12 is-
To see if the town will vote to add the following clause, B. 6. To Mashpee general bylaw, Chapter 170, Subsection 6, B. The use of personal watercraft, including jet skis, watercraft, surf jet watercrafts, and wet bike watercrafts is prohibited on a Schumet pond or take any other action related thereto. I make a motion to add and support. Well, I mean, to support.
No, I'll second it.
Okay.
All right. So, I have a first and a second. Discussion.
Well, after listening to what Ashley had to say, I think, uh-
Well, I think there's more to it than, you know, I know this, that the environmental issue is something that was, was just brought up. It wasn't there last year.
Right.
I get it. I understand that jet skis are dangerous. They really are. Um, but there should be, there are laws that need to be enforced. If they're not enforced, shame on us. Um, but I, I really don't, I don't like the fact that we can take from somebody's use of their property, that the, the use that exists today. Um, you know, if they need to be educated, and I'm not, what I heard was as far as enforcement, somebody would call, and then somebody would come to enforce the infraction. I think somebody needs to be stationed there, whether it's once a week, every, you know, a couple of hours a day on a jet ski or a boat. I think, I think that's the way enforcement should be taken.
But Ashley and her staff don't have the legal standing to enforce Falmouth bylaw in Falmouth.
No, they don't. Well, no, not, but they have the right to enforce, um, the bylaws that are applied to jet skis.
No, we talked, she just said she can, they can sit there and do all the things. You can go after them. They can just go right off to the Falmouth side and say, "You can't touch me."
Touch me.
Well, that doesn't make any sense to me. If the infraction takes place, it's a police officer. They can cross town lines.
That's what she said.
I mean, you, you can, if you're pursuing somebody for an, an infraction, I don't know how you can be not allowed to follow them.
I still have a, I still have a problem with-
You can't issue it o, over the other town, but you can certainly pursue them.
Yeah, I, I just-
But they're not in violation of the jet ski ban when they're in Mashpee waters.
Right. Only in Falmouth.
Only in Falmouth waters.
Right. What they're saying is the operation of. There's no violation. Having a jet ski on the, in the Mashpee side is fine. It's an allowed use. It's the, what's been brought up, what I heard repeatedly, is the improper use. And I'm thinking that if there's a, if, look, people, people drive foolishly and lots of things, whether it be a motorcycle or a car, a jet ski, or a boat. We've, we've all seen it. Um, I think enforcement is the, is the key. I think, I really, I'm not comfortable-
I generally agree with you in the sense, given the experience I've had at Mashpee-Wakeby, that the enforcement presence has made a significant difference in what goes on. There is a point with the size of a pond where the inherent use of the jet ski is incompatible with the other uses. You know, it's a small enough pond, and in order to be used lawfully, it becomes obnoxious and, and, and impacts other passive uses like fishing, canoeing, Because you had to get up to a certain amount of speed, and you need to do certain things in order for it to be the reason you're on a jet ski.
To be fun.
And at some point, small enough pond makes it pretty impossible for all those uses to coexist at one time. So, you know, and the only other thing I guess I'd be careful with is, you know, the ponds that we all use are public properties, we're not taking away anyone's use of their property. We're saying that there are restrictions on the use of a vessel on public property, which is the water. You know, yes, I can imagine if somebody bought a house specifically so they could have a jet ski on the pond, they'd be bent out of shape if they were told they couldn't, I don't disagree with you about that. But we're not taking away their, a use of their property, their property is still their property to do with what they want. Their use of public resource, shared resource, is limited by any of this rule or any other rule.
Right, but you remember last year at the meeting, there, there was a woman that stood up and she bought the, the house to have jet skis there for her two children.
Yep.
And, and I remember clearly, and she, and she was dead set against this.
I know.
And, and I, if they were, if we were talking about a restriction on the size of the, the engines, of the, of the speed capability, I get that. But this is just an out, a ban against all use of, of a jet ski. I think there are other regulations that could have been implied, or enforcement issues that should have taken place before the complete outlaw and banning of them on the pond.
The report was dated, you know, quite a while back, and Mashpee took a, action immediately upon receipt of the report. I think that, you know, for the environmental concerns raised in the report, I think it's a good idea. The other thing is, you know, we're, we're discussing the rights of the jet ski owners, where it sounds like there's fewer people in that regard. Being a small pond, it sounds like Ashley gave a, a good, good representation of complaints that fishing, people out there fishing in canoes and other small watercraft are being disturbed by the jet skis, because essentially to get up to speed, they have to do donuts around the pond. That's affecting the other uses of the pond, so, you know, if you're going to kind of sympathize with the jet skis, we should sympathize with the people out in the canoes or kayaks, you know, that are fishing and minding their own business, and somebody comes racing by them every two seconds while they're trying to have a relaxing day of fishing.
Good point.
You know, I think there's enough for me to support it.
Yeah, I get it, the Ashley's, Ashley's point about the whole, you know, it's a small pond, the ability to use a jet ski, I know people that have a jet ski, and it, the whole thing about a jet ski is, you know, going fast. And that's, that could become reckless, and we heard it from her. I, you know.
You know, I don't take my canoe out on big water, because certain bodies of water are not suited to my vessel. The same, the door swings both ways, you don't necessarily have to put a big vessel or a fast vessel on a small body of water for it to be equally incompatible. Anyway, I'm comfortable putting it in front of the voters, and they can ultimately decide whether they want to, you know, go for this or not. And it will be heated, because it always is.
All right, can I call, am I called to a vote?
Yeah.
To, actually, do we have to?
Yeah, we have to put how many people vote for it or support it.
Yeah, it's on the warrant, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, did we put it on?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so.
We already put it on, so.
Right, so it's a matter of whether we support it.
So can I have a, yeah, sort of motion to, oh, actually, can I have a vote to support it?
Yeah, that's your motion, right?
That was my motion, yeah, and you seconded it.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Andy?
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm gonna say no, but I want the voters to, yes, to, to make the choice.
So?
So you can ask.
Four to five.
Finance committee took no position because there was no financial effects.
Is that it? We done?
No.
Thirteen.
Article eighteen.
Article eighteen.
So when we left eighteen, eighteen was the sewer design. So we were waiting for one thing, which was the number from the engineering firm, which came in at four hundred and ninety thousand two hundred dollars. However, another issue arose the end of last week, that maybe I'll ask town manager to speak to, the debt exclusion scheduling. Problem with having Article eighteen on the debt exclusion.
Yes, there was an email that was received from the town clerk. She received it from the state, which essentially indicates that we have gone beyond the deadline, and we would not be able to do it until May.
If we went with a debt exclusion question.
If we went with the debt exclusion, that is correct.
Which I think we should.
Well, let me just, if I might, I, I just wanna, I just wanna, and I'm not gonna beat this to death, I'm not gonna. But I do want to put it out on the table, I want to just ask you, Rodney, you know, the only other alternative here is to do it as it originally appeared, before we changed it last week, and do it as an appropriate, you know, from appropriation from free cash.
And I'm not comfortable.
Okay, but let me, have you, now that we're two months out from the end of the fiscal year, do you have any more information on how you close the fiscal year? Like amounts for turnbacks, and any sense of what our revenue available for appropriation will be as we go into town meeting?
Yes.
Would you care to share that with us?
Yes.
Thank you.
At this particular time, and I'm gonna caution the board, that this is not certified free cash.
Right.
We're not at that point yet, but based on the unanticipated revenues, based upon the turnbacks that we had, based on the free cash that we started with, we should be somewhere in the vicinity of where we were last year, which was around nine million plus.
So your turnbacks were what?
Approximately three million, hold on a second, and I'll get you the exact figure.
About even of, over last year, over last year.
Free cash, but turnbacks are real high relative to what they've been in the past. If it's three million bucks?
No.
Was it three million last year?
Yeah, it was close to it.
Two million nine hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So anyway, my argument would be.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The only other thing that I would just point out is, we generally use, give or take, a million and a half for the operating. And we obviously just approved, or I should say.
All the contracts.
One hundred and thirty-five thousand for the contracts, so, with that having been said.
So I guess my, my question I put to the board would be, in light of the fact that you've taken out the million and a half and the hundred and fifty, you know, you're still at in excess of seven million dollars in free cash, which is more than ten percent of your operating budget, which is kind of a litmus test that we've been given by our voters. And given the fact that there's a real potential, as we discussed last week, that if a federal financial assistance program comes into effect later this fall or early in the spring, that having this project on the design list makes us potentially eligible for federal funds for the construction. It's worth it, I think it's worth it to appropriate this money out of free cash in the fall as a way to preserve the likelihood that we would be able to get construction assistance for this project, because it would already be designed. And that if we had, you know, four million dollars in free cash, and you're talking about taking, you know, an eighth of it, that's one thing. But if you've got nine million dollars in free cash, and you're talking about four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, I don't know that we're putting the town at any substantial risk, and we're potentially saving our taxpayers a fair bit of money. And the last point I'll make is, if we have that much money in cash reserves, not sure why we want to go to our voters and ask them to increase their taxes when we can actually afford it out of our pocket, which is what we'd be doing if we would go to the spring. You know, the design and engineering are not state revolving fund eligible things for which we can borrow at zero interest. They're an ineligible cost, and if we've got the cash, why borrow for it and increase the ultimate payback cost to the voters?
Okay, I have a question.
Sure.
What are we doing with the two hundred and fifty thousand that, that we put aside for the base? Anything happening with that?
I don't think anything's happened with that, I mean, the base has been static.
But we put two hundred and fifty thousand.
We did, and we could choose to use that for this, and cut the appropriation by two fifty. And then, so you'd be talking two forty in new money.
Well, my whole thing is, this doesn't even have to come, it's not even gonna go forward for three years. I mean, Catherine, I asked her, you're looking at five years down the road.
I know.
That's why I asked.
I know you did.
Well, there's no reason to do this.
The only reason, Carol, I'll give you back, is if there's, again.
But I don't think we need to do it, and I don't think it.
I, I just think, I, I.
I just think of the uncertainty of where we are, I know, we've got roadwork to do, she just came before us for all those streets that need to be redone. We're looking at, I, I, I'm, I'm not comfortable, and where we are with the COVID, it, to me, I, I'm not.
That's fine, I just think that if, there's a federal bill that provides funding assistance, and we don't.
That's uncertain, that's all uncertain.
I know it's uncertain, it's a, but that's what happened, that's, the Cape missed out on money in two thousand and seven through two thousand and nine, because none of us had anything designed. And if we're gonna do this eventually, which we all agree we are.
Yeah, we are.
We are, why not?
But I think if there's money available, there will be money available in the spring, and that's when we'll bring this forward.
But if, but if by waiting till the spring, you foreclose the, you minimize, you reduce your chance of getting federal construction assistance, I'm not sure what the value of that is. It just, it seems an unnecessary foreclosure of our options.
I just don't, I, I'm not one for spending.
That's fine.
What point so far, anybody, David, would you like to weigh in?
I think it would be better to commit and begin with the plans for the same reasons stated, you know, so that the projects are shovel-ready.
You're talking three years.
Yep.
It takes that long to get stuff moving, I mean, you know, it'll take a long time to actually, once you commit the funds for them to do the work. So I think the sooner we get going and show some sort of progress, I don't want to keep dragging, dragging my feet on this. You know, the, I think the townspeople have made it clear that, you know, we need to act.
Oh, we need to act, no, no question, I'm not saying.
This is a small step, it sounds like it's within the budget, so I, I would choose to support it.
Comfortable.
Just to clarify, what was, what were the funds, how much were you talking about?
Four hundred and ninety thousand two hundred dollars.
So we're talking about using four hundred and ninety thousand dollars in free cash?
Revenue available for appropriation, unless, you know, if we, I don't know what the logistics would be to repurpose the design money that we've set aside for.
Yes, that's a part of the design money.
That's, I mean, I, my thought on.
If you can reuse that, then, and, and cut the number, great. You know, we're really talking about, at that point, you're talking about two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
I'll go to the, I'll go to the town manager in a second, but Tom, do you have any input, and then I'll go to, back to Collins.
The first thing I liked, that what Carol said, she brought up the two hundred and fifty at the base, remember, remember that money was sitting up there. I don't know that things are ever gonna happen up there, it seems like a lot of people are heading to the base to do whatever, machine guns and fire, fighter training, so. I don't know if we're ever gonna see any use of that for wastewater, not to mention now the, 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 the waste management for the county moving up there. So there's a lot of things potentially happening up there, but I don't know if it'll ever happen. So I like the potential of the two fifty being re-dedicated, reused somewhere else. I, I'm not, I mean, I understand the delay, and, and I like what Andrew says, I'm, I'm all aboard with, because I, I really would like to take advantage and be ready for if there are funds that could come our way to make this happen faster and with less of our own money put into it from the feds. But on the, on the same token, I'm, I'm a little concerned, and I, and other than that, is it, is there any reason why we have to rush this? I mean, we're talking till, we're only talking till May.
Only to become, only to, if they use, a lot of ifs here, Tom. If they use a definition like they used in two thousand and seven, two thousand and nine, shovel-ready projects, you'd need to have something designed and ready to go. And it would have to be, the way they did it last time, was it had to be as of the passage of the federal bill. You couldn't, like, hear that there was money available and then do the design, you had to be ready to go.
But we have it in our queue.
But we'd have to, but if, unless we have the money and the project's being designed, it's not, using the prior definitions, and I don't have any insight, I don't get a vote in Congress, I don't know what they'd do. But if you only can look back at what they did to get some sense of what they're gonna do, and they said, you know, as of the date of this bill passing, stuff that's ready to go qualifies for funding, stuff that's not ready to go, doesn't. So it's a, it, you know, we'd be accelerating this from October, from May to October, to keep our options open. If we're gonna, frankly, if we're gonna spend the same amount of money in May as we would in October, I'm not sure how it all comes out, you know, it's six of one, half dozen of the other. And I guess, you know, the only difference is, we'd be asking to pay for it out of cash, versus asking people to do a debt exclusion. And I guess I'd make the argument, if we got that much money sitting in cash, maybe we could afford to give people a break.
Yeah.
The other side.
With, with the, with the economy the way it is, and it's highly, highly likely that it might go through, because we're kind of in a similar situation, where they're gonna try to jumpstart jobs and get some money going and circulating into the economy through projects, union advocated projects. You know, stuff like this, it, it, it is probably more than likely that they will do something again like that, in my opinion.
Mr. Collins, did you have something you wanted to add?
I'm certainly not suggesting what you do, but what I will just give you is an alternative for the purposes of discussion is, you know, like, for instance, per the selectmen's policy, you have fifteen percent of certified free cash going to capital stabilization. That's gonna be one point three million or thereabouts. One possibility is repurposing the two fifty, I'm just throwing it out there. Repurposing the, the two fifty, and then capital stabilization, getting the other two fifty, or approximately two fifty. I think the total from GHD is four hundred and ninety thousand two hundred dollars.
So I mean, we, we set aside seventy-five percent of our local receipts from hotel motel for wastewater purposes. I'm wondering.
We can use that.
We could use that, I mean, if you start with the two fifty, then you're only looking to find the two forty.
I, I'm, I'm just.
If you, seventy-five percent of your, if you, seventy-five percent of your local receipts on hotel motel gets you a part, a decent amount of the way there. So, I mean.
I, I'm just not comfortable, I, about the whole thing, we're not sure if we do this, if we do that, I just think we should just wait until May. Bring it up in May and see where we go from there, whether we do it either way, debt exclusion or spend the money. I feel more comfortable.
So Rodney, how does it? I'm, I'm a little uneasy with taking the money that we assigned for the base, knowing that, you know, the base just could have been like, okay, we're gonna switch it in gear now, and then we already had that money appropriated and we.
But John, part of the reason you had that money was to look at how you get the wastewater to the base. The pipe this is designing is the pipe that's gonna get the wa, wastewater to the base. So you'd be able to look at, I mean, you're basically spending it on the same thing, because, you know.
I'm just saying, but would we have to ref, you know, refund the money that we assigned to the base if, if they decide to switch it in gear? And again, I'm, I'm playing devil's advocate here, I'm looking at it from a perspective as, even if, if we use free cash, or maybe, you know, Mr. Collins' suggestion is maybe some reshuffling of funds that way.
We can always use free cash in May, if we.
No, I, I get that, but I'm, again, I'm just thinking about the money we have assigned for the base.
You, you may have to repurpose the money for the base anyway, because by the time anything happens up there with the way it looks right now.
It's a three-year appropriation, it's gonna lapse of its own weight.
That's what I was just gonna say, it's, it's gonna be an appropriation that's gonna lapse.
So are those meetings that you've been having, are they just not even happening anymore?
Uh, right now, there hasn't even been a meeting since, since COVID nineteen.
Making a decision on who's getting the treatment plan, and we're very year overdue.
There's just too many different scenarios to this whole thing.
All right, so, so one, so what, so the suggestion would be to appropriate.
Can I amend my motion, just for the purposes of discussion?
Okay.
Make a motion that we look to fund. Make a motion that we look to fund this through a combination, and this would necessitate coming back on the fourteenth with a recommendation from the staff, but we look to fund this from a combination of repurposing the two fifty from the base article, whatever the 75% of local hotel receipts has already been deposited that's set aside for wastewater, and any balance made up, not from free cash, but from capital stabilization. So, we leave free cash untouched.
I'd like to see where the amounts are for it at our next meeting.
We'd have to see what the amounts are, but we give, we give Rodney and Wayne direction, come back and say, look at it this way, because I know people don't want to spend free cash.
I know, right.
There's another way to spend free cash.
I understand.
All you're doing is just repurposing water, money that's already set aside for this purpose.
If we can repurpose it, if it's as simple as that...
I'd rather wait and see.
That's all good?
So, we'll hold this article until next.
Yeah, but with that general, does the board, is there a consensus that we amendable to...
We'll look at it later, yeah.
Second amendment.
And just for clarity, I believe what I'm hearing from the board, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm totally authorized to go to Town Council and get that language as far as repurposing clarified.
Yeah, and then it's just a matter of what money's in what account and how it all racks up.
That way, we're not touching your free cash.
You're not touching your free cash.
Right.
Thank you.
So, everybody wins. Okay?
We don't have to vote on that, so we're all...
Do you have any idea how much money might be in that fund, the hotel fund, or have we, do we get?
I don't have that figure.
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to guess that we were halfway through the year, we were double the prior year's receipts. So, that was about a hundred thousand dollars in fiscal nineteen. So, we're at least two hundred thousand, of which 75% would be set aside for this.
Okay.
So, it's not a big gap. And there was, and there's more that, you know, you've got the accumulation of money that's occurred over the summer that we won't find out about until October, sometime in October.
That's what the use was for.
That's what the use, so we're pretty close by a thumbnail.
John, we need to add...
The cardiac, cardiac.
All right.
So, we're good with all that?
We're good on that.
All right, so the other new potential article is to see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer the sum of $55,950 from the ambulance receipts account to the fire department capital account, or take no other action related thereto.
And this is, this is for three cardiac defibrillators for the town ambulances.
So moved.
Second.
First, the second, any other questions, discussion?
Now, CIP met on this, and we all agreed to it.
Yeah. Can we vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, all in favor?
Great.
Any other, anything I missed? If not, the motion is adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, everybody.